Okay, welcome everybody. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting on Wednesday, December 27, 2017. This is our regular meeting. This meeting is being shown live on Channel 9 as we speak. It's also being recorded and shown on Channel 9 throughout the week. Anybody who's going to record or anything of this meeting just need to let me know. Okay. Let's begin with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any public input? Well, I'm going to have a little public input. I've got to tell you a story first. So my granddaughter, she's three years old, is up visiting from Florida. And my two grandsons are around too, they're older. So her favorite movie is Sing. I don't know if you've ever seen Sing, I know Mallory has. But it's a story about a, it's animated, it's about a, they're putting on a musical show and all that stuff. So at the beginning of the movie, there's a little mouse named Mike and he's singing on the steps of a, someplace. And a monkey goes by and he puts a penny in his thing. So Mike gets very upset, so he grabs the monkey and shakes him down. And out of his pocket falls a, an inhaler. So Mike picks it up and goes, "What do you smoke out of this?" And that seems to be the favorite phrase that my daughter picked up. And she, so I told her I would mention it tonight because she'll get a kick out of that. So I hope you're watching, Kai.
What do you smoke out of this?
She doesn't know what that means, but she's walking around, "What do you smoke out of this?" Anyway. Okay, I'm done.
My update's not as exciting as that. So when I first came on board here to Dayton, I kind of joined in at the same time that the town was indicted, invited to join the Southeastern Regional Services Group, which is a public purchasing consortium of 21 communities. And the idea behind it is that having all of these communities helps us with buying power and gives us a better deal through vendors who want to reach out to all of these other communities. So the town of Dayton was invited. I attended an open house with Water Superintendent Cahalo Brian and Highway Superintendent Tom Ferry. We, this open house was essentially just being a guest at their meeting and being able to ask the questions that we had, which we had many of course. And after all of that was done and we compared the prices that we've been receiving to what that bid was that they were awarding, it seemed comparable, if not lower. So it seems like a good deal. The questions I had were about prorating the dues. If we joined in the middle, is there a benefit to do that? Can the schools join in? Can our other entities, so our water district, the sewer commission, can they benefit from this as well? And the answer to that is yes. So that's exciting. But I just wanted to get that out on the table. I've written you a letter of recommendation to join if we want to take advantage of the next upcoming bid, which is spring 2018. It's for paper, water and sewer treatment chemicals and DPW services, which I'll tell you, DPW supplies and services are about every time they're included, just for their annual, what they have to do all throughout the year. So those are the top, the three that she's going out to bid. We have to decide in February for membership effective in March. And Cahalo Brian did discuss this with his water commissioners. They are interested in exploring it and they'd like to have a meeting with us to discuss splitting up the dues. So the dues, just so the public is aware, are $4,100 a year, but you do save all of the administrative burden from going out to bid. You don't have to worry about a bid protest, the administrator for Sursage handles that. You do get the savings, as I mentioned before, so there are some benefits. And ours would be prorated for membership of March, April, May, and June, should we decide to join.
So you're going to talk to the school and we're going to have to meet and figure out how to divvy that up?
How to divvy that up, exactly. And the school did say that they were interested, I heard today. So perhaps they should be invited to that meeting as well, just to talk about it. But paper alone.
And have you spoken to anyone in the sewer department about it?
I did. I do have a meeting with Diane Curtis in a couple weeks. She didn't really know if they would get a lot of benefit out of it, but at the end of the day, it's Diane. And so she would be, or that commission would be able to purchase. But if they don't have a lot to purchase, it doesn't make sense for them to commit to a cost. So I guess that is, is part of the conversation. But I do have a meeting with her coming up. And then kind of an offshoot of this, if we were to join Sursage, the administrator asks that we, it's kind of confusing because she has the same title as I do, I'm sorry. The administrator asks that the town appoint Chief Procurement Officer designation. I do hope that I, my position would become the Chief Procurement Officer for the town just on, on a total basis. But this would, if we do decide to join, we do have to have this conversation and decide who would be the Chief Procurement Officer.
Just indulge me for a moment. In your experience, mostly when a town or a municipality has a town administrator, I'm sorry, I was reading this, usually the town administrator is the chief procurement officer.
Usually, or the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, I've seen. But usually it's a town administrator. And I think it should be, because it's not going to change potentially over a year if you reorganize.
Correct, it's stability.
And then you just, I mean, this is just, sign this, okay, go ahead. And then we would compile, part of our job would be to compile how much paper, for example, that we purchased over the last year, so that they can understand what our needs might be. So I would compile that and then send that over and Maura, who's the administrator of Sursage, takes care of the rest. So there is a little bit of work to it, so it makes sense for a paid professional to take care of that. And then it usually should be somebody separate from a checking kind of role, which the town accountant checks, the treasurer checks the work. So that's what they advise, before it gets paid.
Okay, so we'll, we'll talk more about that in future meetings.
So that is just, you know, on your agenda coming up. You might have the water commissioners here. It'll probably be in mid-January to be after my meeting with Diane. And then the Industrial Development Committee, speaking of meetings, I'm going to be meeting with them on January 22. The idea is to discuss what their plans are to help spur economic development and what they've done, to reach out to the people, find out what the people are looking for in their town. So I just want to let you know I'm attending that and I'll probably give an update. Not probably, I will.
A little information, I went around to the, all the car dealerships today and stuff. And, you know, I think one thing we always have to keep in mind is not only talk about what are we going to bring into town, but how are we going to maintain what we already have? So that, and that should be part of that committee's role too, so anyway, food for thought.
Thank you. And my next item, we touched upon last meeting, so it's kind of a carryover. But you, Mr. Chairman, did have an idea of receiving some sort of regular, whether that's monthly, quarterly, whatever we decide, update from various boards, not only for us to know what's going on, but the public to know what they have in front of them. So if the board desires, we can go forward and schedule that. I don't, what's the flavor of the board, I guess?
I think, I think these two committees you talked about here are two of the ones we'd like to hear from, or what anybody else thinks.
Yeah, that's fine.
So maybe just schedule a moment for, you know, a short little five, 10 minute presentation.
Just my personal preference if we do that would be more to, instead of having it, yes, we would love for them to report, but I don't want it to feel like they're reporting to their boss, right? I want it to be a discussion, so that not only are we hashing out what work they've done and, you know, acknowledging them for that, but also what work we think we'd like to work with them going forward, what their plans are and how we can help as the Board of Selectmen. I think that just makes for a more productive, focused discussion.
Well, the idea is to keep us up to date and also to keep the house people up to date with what we're doing. Because that open space question here is very interesting, I'm sure they, great.
That's all I have for my report.
Do we have any old business?
No old business.
Mr. Chairman, could we take Agenda Item 6E next, please, so that these gentlemen can?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Okay, Council Oak.
So I can start by saying that we are still awaiting the purchase and sale agreement for Council Oak. We had hoped to receive it today, which is why we anticipated you gentlemen being here being able to sign it. But we did send some over revisions, we have yet to receive the copy back, but we do it, excuse me, do have some documents for you to sign so we can process some payment and have it ready. We are trying very hard to meet the deadline for the seller. So we're doing really everything we can and we're just waiting on a lawyer.
Deadline is January.
January 12th is the deadline, so there is some time. But my understanding is that you, Mr. Fernet, have normally signed off on purchases like the closing.
That's the date for, to execute the P and S.
Yep.
There's a January, there's a December date in there for the deposit and that other thing. It's a two-step thing. The December date is important because of taxes. That's why they want that in place, so that Gay and Gay's got to understand. That has to be signed on or before January 31st, the initial agreement.
You mean December 31st.
Excuse me, December 31st. I mean, they were told this when I sent the email way back when.
You mean town council, right?
Yes, I will verify that, because I asked him that, but I'm wondering now if maybe
him and I weren't on the same page, because he told me that the, quote, his words, hard and fast date was January 12th.
Who said that?
Tom Gay, the attorney. So I will verify that, for sure.
You know what? I really am really nervous about this, because of the tax implications. That's why they are looking for the 2017 date. And I would almost suggest you contact the attorney, Zajak, is that his name?
Yeah.
And ask them, because they're the ones that are really looking for that date. And if they don't get that December date, this whole thing could fall through.
So you can check those days.
I'll call first thing tomorrow morning and verify.
So December 30, I just want to be clear for myself. December 31st, 2017, is the deadline for the $1,000 deposit?
What's, do you have that?
Yeah.
That's one thing we didn't.
This is the most recent version from that we discussed.
That's not, that's not an issue, because we just signed it tonight.
What was that?
That $1,000 deposit. We just signed that, approved that tonight at the.
That's so that, we basically have to pay this like it's a bill, so we have to process it through. So that's for us to get our items in order.
But is that, is that $1,000?
Okay. First, first line, this agreement made this blank day of December 2017. That December 2017 date is very important.
Right, Maura was supposed to be today.
So let's just have that, Mallory checked that out tomorrow.
Yeah. But I got to tell you, don't just go with Attorney Gay's opinion, contact the attorney for the seller.
Mr. Digg.
When we had our discussion in vogue, the December date was important. I don't know where your $1,000 deposit comes in.
It's in the purchase.
It's written in the purchase, the sales.
Purchase and sales purchase.
Okay, but I, okay, I thought it was just the money would come after the fact, so long as the purchase and sales agreement was signed during the month of December.
The, the, correct. The bulk of the money will be paid on the January 12th closing date, but they did add a clause, this was our attorney talking to the attorney for the seller, that, that some money should change hands. So they put in $1,000.
So that's independent of us.
So that $1,000 is the paperwork that we have here. And we have a check for $1,000, but nothing will be released until that purchase and sales is properly executed, okay? So, so that's how this all came about.
So I think we're going to be okay, just need to double check.
I'll double check and I'll do, I'll contact him as well.
Because the whole thing relates to a tax advantage.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was the idea behind it.
Exactly.
So you guys are all set then, once we get that done?
There is some paperwork for you to sign here tonight, though. There's some paperwork for you to sign here tonight, so we don't want you to leave until you sign what Karen has for you.
I have most of it, except when you drug away like that.
Don't leave until we say. No, I'm just kidding.
Bill, you will have to come back to sign the purchase and sales agreement when we get one, that's correct. Let me put it that way.
See, for those of you who don't know, Bill is.
He's only got one more day then, because your town hall is closed on Friday.
We have a $1,000 check, that's, yeah. Let Mallory figure out in the morning and have, we'll do what we got to do, it's going to happen.
With, with electronic media today, there's nothing, all you have to do is a few keys and it could be here.
Started this last Friday.
That is what we're waiting for, Town Administrator Aaron Stinson's waiting for the email with the finalized version.
Okay.
That's why I was sitting, I was sitting there waiting, refreshing.
I told you.
Okay, we all set with that? Okay.
If worse comes to worse, I will tell you right now, I will have that, if it's not signed by, by Friday, I will get it. And I will have it the 30th or the 31st. It will be signed. Had I known this was going to happen and not been acted on last Friday when I sent it to the attorney again, I would have said, "Email the whole thing to me and I will fix it."
Well, let Mallory take care of it, I think she's totally capable, so.
The attorney is Tom Gay.
Yeah.
Okay, new business, police station visit.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks.
I'll be out here.
You got the minutes that I gave you?
Yes, I do.
This is for the $1,000 that binds the agreement.
Yeah, where would you like me to sign it?
Right under here.
Okay.
I'll drive this to your house if I have to, this P and S agreement.
You can see his dogs then.
Yeah.
I'm a dog person. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I'll be doing that first thing.
Okay, the police station visit.
I'm not sure if we have correspondence. I did forward it to everyone, but we were contacted from a gentleman who is, you know, working on the project. And we were basically invited, the board.
I remember seeing that. He's a manager of some kind.
Correct. Tower, he's with Tower Construction. We were invited to do a site visit to see everything while it's in progress.
So we're just scheduling on your, how, when do you want to do it?
Warmer weather.
I know.
Because they're not working.
May, not this week.
May, June.
Maybe the weekend after next, because it's supposed to warm up.
If we could do it the earlier in the day, the better. Like 10 is, I feel like, too late, just because then I'm not getting to work.
Schedule it for 8 o'clock in the morning, Friday?
Yeah, whatever.
Ooh, when it's most cold. Get a real authentic visit.
Well, it's an inspection.
That is true.
Okay. Liquor license renewals.
Thank you.
Okay, so we got a number of liquor license renewals here. And I assume everything is in order, Karen, right?
Yes.
So I guess, I guess I can just go down and read them and we can sign off. First one is for Giorgio's Steakhouse. The second is for Mount Hope Liquors. The third is for the Taunton Yacht Club.
Excuse me, Jack, can we vote these all in one or do we have to do individual?
Those you can vote all in one.
I remember doing them all.
The Taylor's license is broken down into Class 1.
Then you have to do those separately.
Okay, okay.
Taunton Yacht Club. Everchaldus Corporation, Mendoza's Liquor. Alice's Last Stop. Gatarani Incorporated, which is the new Fast Mart. Winthrop Street Gas Corporation, Mobile of Dayton. Medway Enterprises, which is Route 44 Liquors. Almeda's Country Store. And Vinnyac, doing business at Johnny's Market.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the following alcoholic beverage licenses be approved. Giorgio's Steakhouse, Mount Hope Village Liquors, Taunton Yacht Club. Everchaldus Corporation, DBA, Mendoza's Liquors. Alice's Last Stop. Gatarani, DBA, New Fast Mart. Winthrop Street Gas Corporation, DBA, Mobile of Dayton. Medway Enterprises Incorporated, DBA, Route 44 Liquors. Almeda's Country Store. Vinnyac Incorporated, DBA, Johnny's Market. What's Giorgio's?
It was in there. It feels like one of the first ones.
It was one of the first ones, yeah.
Oh, all right. I was looking for a person's name. Okay, thank you. You need a name.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, great. Okay, the auto dealer license renewals.
I'll give them to you one by one and we'll do it that way.
Okay.
Thank you, for the best.
Now, do you have those worksheets I did, worksheet?
Yes, I did.
Because there's a couple here we're not going to do.
These are Class 1, Mr. Chairman.
Right. Go ahead, won't you, won't you, these are, these are good, won't you motion those?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the following Class 1 licenses. These are for agents or sellers. Lynn's Propane Trucks Corporation and Truck and Iron Traders LLC.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Let's keep those together, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, we'll.
Class 2.
Yeah, I know, just, just get to, because there were some of these that I didn't. I think there was two. It's, I know it's 508 Customs that I couldn't visit.
Yeah, I think what I did is I went and attached them to each individual, so they were there.
Oh, did you get to see all their books and stuff?
Yeah. I'm trying to see where.
So here's your, here's your recap.
Okay, I can, that worked for me, okay. So there was two that I wasn't able to visit because they were closed today. And one is that one right there, which is.
508 Customs and Collisions Incorporated.
And the other one was Bristol County Auto Sales on Winthrop Street. So what I would, what I would like to suggest is we, we approve these with the stipulation that I need, I'll visit them probably next week because they're closed for the holiday. And if everything is okay, we can.
So we should do those two separate, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. So I can go, do you want to do this?
Okay. Yep. Mr. Chairman, I move that the following Class 2 licenses be renewed. Kimball Enterprises. Judith Costa, DBA, Costas Truck and Auto Sales. North Dayton Garage Incorporated. Advanced Automotive Repairs Incorporated. Mannheim Remarketing Incorporated, DBA, Mannheim, New England. Reese's Auto Sales Incorporated. Thomas Bellman, DBA, Medway Motor Sales LLC. Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. So do we want, those have already been done?
Oh, I just got to sign them.
So do you want, are we, are you comfortable with doing this this way?
Do you?
Do they expire, when do they expire?
January 1st.
Oh, January the 1st.
So they would then be expired.
They would be expired. What you can do and what I've had boards do in the past is approve pending successful completion of inspection.
Right.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve a Class 2, Class 2 licenses to Bristol County Auto Incorporated and 508 Customs and Collisions Incorporated pending successful inspection.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, great. Don't, don't sign it.
Oh, that's fine. Get these away from me.
Okay. And then we have some Class 3s, which is what you have right there.
Just checking, one sec. Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve Class 3 motor vehicle junk licenses to Stephen Lewis, which is L and L Used Car Parts, Borges Foreign Auto Parts Incorporated, and Bristol County Incorporated.
Bristol County what?
Auto.
Auto, excuse me, I'm sorry. Bristol County Auto Incorporated, thank you.
Isn't that one of the?
Yeah, this.
They're going to get a Class 2 as well.
They have a Class 2 and a Class 3.
So this is just junk and that's?
But is that one tentative, because you haven't seen the books?
No, I have. Bristol County Auto, oh, I'm sorry.
Well.
No, you're right, that is tentative, I'm sorry.
So withdraw the motion and set that one aside, we'll vote that one separately with a tentative, like you did on the others.
I withdraw the Class 2, the motion I made to approve the Class, I haven't, I haven't made those yet. I didn't even finish.
It's a Class 3.
Okay. All right, I make a motion to withdraw my, I withdraw my motion regarding the Class 3 licenses.
Okay, so now you can make the two that we know about and the other one will be tentative.
And which one is tentative?
The Bristol County.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, sorry, public. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve Class 3 motor vehicles junk license to Stephen Lewis, also known as L and L Used Car Parts, and Borges Foreign Auto Parts Incorporated.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, okay. Okay, we have a Board of Health recommendation.
Wait, are you going to do the tentative one on Bristol County, like the other tentative one? You got the?
And, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve tentatively the Class 3 motor vehicles junk license to Bristol County Auto Incorporated pending successful inspection.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Don't sign it.
That's the one.
Yep. Okay, now our next board of business is Board of Health Recommendation for Backup for the Transfer Station Attendant. We have a letter here from Tom Pires, the Chairman of the Board of Health, and it reads as follows, "The Board received and reviewed two applications for the position of part-time attendant. At the regular meeting, December 13, 2017, the Board unanimously voted to recommend to the Selectmen the appointment of Mr. Timothy Reins as backup attendant effective immediately. Mr. Reins has previous experience as an attendant and understands this assignment will be on an ad needed, as an ad, as needed on-call basis."
Before I make a motion, or before anybody does, I just had a question, and it's, it's general, because I'm not sure if anybody knows more than what I know about this. Is the expectation, because I believe, I might be wrong, the previous attendant, maybe you remembered, I, I thought they had resigned.
They had resigned, but he's, but he's withdrawn, he's withdrawn.
Okay. So is the expectation to have a on-call transfer station attendant to eventually fill that spot, or is this just in general?
No, no, this is to fill in.
If the guy's sick or can't make.
Or he wants to take the weekend off, so we'll cover for him.
We don't take vacations. All right, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to appoint Mr. Timothy Reins as the backup attendant, transfer station attendant.
Second.
Yeah, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, we're going to hand it back to Mallory. These are policies for the Board of Selectmen to review and discuss.
So the plan for the policies of the Board of Selectmen has really just morphed every day. So what I would say is the, the Board had asked me to develop a list of my top five policies, which I have for you here, and we'll go over them in a second. But some things are listed on the agenda, so I just want to go over those very quickly. The social media policy is one of my top five, so we'll go back to that in a minute. The Selectmen's meeting policy, because it's essentially done and now ready for public input, I don't want to include on the top five and use up a slot, but I don't want us to forget it either. So I'd like us to make some sort of decision on that. The flag policy, I understand the need for this came from resident concerns about ordering the flag at half-staff. So this I would like us to put on hold. It's not part of my top five, but is something that I can easily work on next to this top five, but I do ask that we put that on hold.
Sure.
And I will say that what, some of the things that impacted my decisions on this are the policy manual that was adopted by the Board of Selectmen when I had a previous membership. So I read that cover to cover, and some things are fit, they are fit for Dayton, and some just aren't. Some are outdated simply because Mass General Law changed. So I would like to go through that, this is in addition to these top five policies, and really revamp it. I've generated a list, so I've done one reading, I'd like to go back and do another reading cover to cover again, just to make sure I actually agree with myself, I guess, the first time around. But I did write a list of what I think we should keep, what I think we should modify, what I think we should scrap totally. So that's something that I will be working on. It's actually listed as one of my goals that you'll be reviewing next meeting, so that's more to come. And it did shape my list in a way. So to get to the list, the top five policies I've chosen that I think are most essential for the Board to work on first is an email and computer use policy. I've begun research, Selectman Gulart pointed me in a great direction with the UMass Computer Use Policy, so I'd like to use that, compile it. There's actually the policy manual adopted by the Board of Selectmen references an email and computer use and social media all in one, so I'd like to take and pull things and clean it up a little bit. And it's funny, some of it mimics what has previously come to this Board already, so that just needs some work.
I think I also sent you, in addition to what Selectman Gulart sent you, like an actual town's policy, computer use or email that they've already adopted.
Exactly, that was a town of Sudbury. Yep, I've gone through that. So everything's sort of like shuffled in, and it will really be just pulling from different places to make it the best fit for Dayton. The rules and regulations of the Selectmen, I don't know if this is actually a policy, but I think it's important, and it carves out the roles that the three of you will have operating together. And so I forwarded something that West Bridgewater had to Selectmen Chairman Taylor to look at, but I think it's wise, if you all agree on this list, for you all to look at it and provide input. You can do this separately, email me the input, I can, and we can work this way through all policies. Email me the input, and I can sort of merge it all together, which would provide all of your opinions, and then we can talk about it at a meeting that way.
Hey, started to just rough something out, so I don't know if you want to, want me to finish roughing it out, send it to you, and then you can say.
Send it, send it to Mallory.
Well, send it to Mallory.
We can distribute it.
Yeah. I think, can I, I want, I'd like to mention something about that. I, I like the idea of rules and regulations for the Board of Selectmen. I would hope as you, you know, continue crafting it, that you would include something about kind of synchronizing correspondence with Town Council.
Okay.
So that, and everybody may have their opinion on it, but I think it's best to just have one kind of, you know, we all have all this information now flowing through the Town Administrator, and I kind of see corresponding with Town Council as part of that information flow going forward.
Okay.
I agree with that because I'll, hopefully, the designated individual has the most up-to-date, although that's ideal, I'm sure.
Only if the designated person is available, I'm not gonna sit back. I wouldn't have sat back had I known this thing was gonna be delayed tonight.
Well, I think, I think the point of it is, though, that we can't all be going to, I mean, I don't think it's just the Town Council, I think it's a lot of different places, and I think if anything, they should go to Mallory, so these one person will have.
But I also think nothing should be held because it's not a workday for Mallory, that's my point.
Well, I don't think it should be held either.
That's what we need to work out.
I don't think things, things with Town Council are.
Yep.
Priority always.
Absolutely.
In my opinion. Financial policy and statements on here, just because what we have coming up with bonding for the police station, the anti-harassment policy, I did bring this up briefly about my goals, and it's on here. I think it's important, it's an important HR policy.
Yeah.
And then social media I added here. I believe that it should be separate from email and computer use, but perhaps you have a different take, and, you know, I'm not married to this.
Oh, I don't, my, my beliefs are not, on policy, aren't really like steeped in philosophy. If it's separate, it's separate. If it makes more sense to have it be part of it, I'll defer to your judgment, and we can just discuss it when we get to that point here.
And I, you know, I don't like them to go on and on, I just think people will stop reading, and it's important that they don't stop reading.
I mean, I think if you can't get it on one to two pages, it's, it's not gonna be read. Because some of the, some of the things you read, you know, you're trying, why did I see that? You have to jump back ten pages to hear, so I agree with you on that.
Which is why I think the policy manual has been a little bit cantankerous, because it is so.
Too long, too long.
Absolutely.
And all of our department heads are busy, they're doing stuff. I listed two, I called them honorable mentions, because perhaps you don't agree with my list, and that's fine, but I also think some sort of hiring policy, so that other boards know what to do when they're expanding their offices, if they are, and a procurement policy, because the one in the book is outdated. It refers back to previous, before the Minnesota Monetization Act.
Okay.
So those are my top seven.
My one wish as we proceed with the Policies and Procedures Manual, Selectman Gulart and I have known, you know, pretty much since we got on the Board that it needed to be done, but we were just so busy doing the Board of Health and Board of Selectmen, it didn't get done, we had other things to do. I would hope, as we proceed with kind of thinking about doing it over again, or revamping it at, at the very least, that we would not only seek feedback from department heads, but we would actually consider that feedback. I think it's very important that they have a say in it, not saying they didn't before, I wasn't here for the last crafting of it, but if we're asking our employees to abide by it, I think they should get a say in it. I'm pretty sure you probably feel the same way.
I agree, and they're also, you know, I'm not the police chief, obviously, I'm not driving around in, in a cruiser, and I don't have employees that are direct reports that are driving around in cruisers, so I might not notice something about a town vehicle use policy that they are, you know, seeing as a problem or burdensome or something like that. So it's always good, in my opinion, to have fresh eyes on things.
Absolutely.
I think, I think that's what Mallory's really doing, though, with these policies, because I think we need, I think you can't take the whole thing because it's really not worthy of it, and do them one at a time, just to review them and then we.
And there's some that are great, I mean, there's drug-free workplace, yes, we all agree on that. So it's not, I don't mean to come across that it's bad or a bad document, I just think that it needs to be reworked so that it's workable, and people will follow it and can follow it with, while still providing the services we require them to provide.
Well, and I think, just for the public who might be watching and wondering why we're redoing a policy and procedures manual a year after it was adopted, I think, like as Town Administrator Aaronstein said, there are some things that are outdated, so I would hope as we, you know, go through and possibly revamp it, that whoever is sitting in these chairs would have a commitment to the town, that they will, you know, sort of go through it maybe once every year and make changes, because laws change all the time, so. But then we're not having to do it over again, so.
And I will say, what is, what, how do we post these out? So Selectman Gulart said that we have a third reading of the policy, and then it's the opportunity for public input. How do we, what is the best way? Is it the website? Is it posting at town halls? Is it Facebook? Is it all three? Is it email?
But that's a three, that's three, three-time reading, is that, what is, is that a bylaw?
That's at this meeting, that's at this meeting.
Yeah.
We didn't have the opportunity to post those to all those other places.
Right.
So any place where you can make it public is fine.
Okay.
But the practice of the Board, going back to 2007, has been, for example, I was gonna say, we have the Board of Selectmen Meeting Agenda Policy, so we could read this for the first reading, and read it two more times, the public knows about it, once we read it the first time, it can go out on all of those sites, okay? And in case anybody wants to comment or say anything.
Okay.
And we read it for the third time and then vote it.
Okay.
I guess my question is, is that, that reading it three times, where does that come from? Is that a bylaw, is that a real policy, or what is that?
What I will say is.
Is it a policy? I have no idea.
Okay, what I'm trying to get to is.
It's not in the book.
When we went to adopt.
So it's a, it's a past practice, then?
Okay, it's a past.
But I will say, it's been one that's been adhered to, because when I was on the Board of Health, when we were on the Board of Health, and anytime you tried to even adopt any, consider a new regulation or statute or anything like that, it got read three times, and it took, you know, almost a month to get to the point where you're now adopting it.
But the idea behind this, iron out all the wrinkles and make sure that.
And to get the word out, really get the word out.
And just like we're giving employees a chance to, we're giving the public a chance, exactly.
So are we ready to, or can read the Selectmen Meeting Policy?
I think it's been ready, I have no problem if the Board doesn't have it.
Well, we went through it. Karen, it was last week, the official first reading.
I'm not sure we read the whole thing.
No, this is, this is the first official reading, that's it, yeah, I think you're right.
You had some changes, I've incorporated those changes, so, and it's still on one page.
Okay, so, yes, it's a habit. Okay, this is the Board of Selectmen Meeting Agenda Policy, and it reads as follows. The background, Board of Selectmen hereby adopts a policy for posting agenda for its meetings to ensure compliance with the open meeting law promulgated by the Attorney General as a result of the 2009 Ethics Reform Bill. The purpose of the open meeting law is to ensure transparency and deliberations of, on which public policy is based. Selectmen meetings are subject to the open meeting law, the agendas for which are required to be posted at least forty-eight hours in advance. So the purpose of the policy is to establish procedures that promote efficiency and transparency in governing, encourages civic participation at Selectmen meetings while ensuring compliance with open meeting law. And the policy is follows. This policy shall apply to Board of Selectmen meetings excluding, in cases of emergency, this policy shall not apply to any other Board, Committee, or Commission. All items to be discussed at any Board of Selectmen's meeting will be submitted to the Town Administrator in ample time to allow the meeting to be posted, not less than forty-eight hours prior to the meeting. Submission of items for the Selectmen's meeting on Wednesday at 7:30 shall be submitted no later than 12:30 PM on Monday prior to the meeting. Any agenda item not received by the aforementioned deadline will be deferred until the next regular scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen. In the event of a holiday, items for Wednesday meetings shall be received 12:30 PM on the Thursday preceding the holiday. Prior to posting the agenda will be approved by the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. After an agenda item has been posted, revisions or additions of unforeseen urgent items may be added to the agenda with approval of the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
Fantastic.
Okay.
Very good work, I'm very impressed, thank you.
Thanks.
And just so everybody knows, we've already been doing this, so it's more or less a formality of, the other thing I wanted to mention, we do email the agenda, usually on Monday evenings now, so you can sign up to the email list, and Town Administrator Aaronstein also gives her monthly newsletters via this medium, so get on the newsletter list, we're happy to give you the agendas in our newsletter, so that you have a good idea of what's going on and what's gonna be discussed.
Just one comment, in the event of a holiday, should we say in the event of a Monday holiday?
Yeah, probably.
The only thing I would caution, and I guess it doesn't really matter, but if one day you decided not to meet on Wednesdays, I don't really see that happening, but.
I think we'd revise it.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
So what's, when do we, can we change that to Monday holiday?
Sure.
Just insert the word Monday, in the event of a Monday holiday.
Naturally, I put it back in my pack.
If you have a question.
So that's good for the first reading.
And do we want to talk about the flag policy at all, they mean?
That's up to you.
Well, I think.
Didn't you read what is approved? I mean.
The flag policy?
Yeah, you read that, I thought.
No, no, no.
The US flag policy.
Well, I know what the US flag policy, I think, but the, well, the question, the question is that, you know, towns have the authority to, to develop a flag policy that's beyond what the governor does, declares, or what the president declares. And the question is, do we want to have a, a policy for that? Will we lower the flag at, to half-staff for certain, you know, former members, like for example, former members of the Board of Selectmen? Or do we want to have some other mechanism? Now, you know, last week we talked about the Torres family sent us a very nice thank-you card and a donation, and they greatly appreciated the fact that Frank Torres, when, when he died, that the flag was lowered to half-staff. And I, you know, and, and I'm kind of torn a little bit between the two, but I think, I think Selectmen are kind of like the executive branch of the, of the town, and I think, and I don't, I think it's, I don't think it's a bad policy to lower it, for those, I think we would have to have this very clear criteria, which Mallory has from West Bridgewater, which we could model after and come up with a discussion, but.
Now, I'm just gonna be, I'm just gonna speak for myself.
Yeah.
I would find it almost insulting if I pass and the town lowers the flag for me. I really, really think, as a kind of compromise idea, would be, we have the town flag, if a town dignitary passes, I see it as being more appropriate to lower the town's flag for a town dignitary. Now, we can discuss if that particular resident happened to be a veteran, for example, what would you do with the American flag in that case, I have no problem, but I just feel like it's more appropriate when it's a town resident to lower the town flag.
Yeah, for all town residents?
I think it's all fraught with too many conditions, and I think we ought to go with what this, what you read as the state or the federal policy. I can't imagine, it, no, I'd feel strange lowering the flag for me when I die.
That's.
I haven't served in the military. By the same token, we don't want to say we're gonna lower it for all veterans, then we miss a veteran, because that's, that's what I'm saying, I think it's fraught with just too many technicalities, and I think that, I think in the case of, of what we did for Mr. Torres, absolutely fine, no problem at all. I don't think we did it when Mr. Costa passed, but I don't think that that's an insult, it just didn't happen. I think it was because the practice was questioned, and you cleared that up by reading exactly what the Board can do.
Right.
Under the law, and I would just assume, let it stay there, let it stay that way.
Stay, I'm not sure what you, not lowered for anybody, but what the governor.
If the, if the Board, the sitting Board decides, or even the Veterans Agent, quite frankly, if you have a decorated war veteran, that he feels it's appropriate, then it can be done. But my concern is that some will be left out who should have been recognized, and the both.
Well, I feel like any time you lower a flag, there's a chance you may miss somebody, whether it's the town flag or they may, you may miss somebody. I feel like unless you have a blanket policy, either way, you're either gonna always do it or not do it, there's always the risk of missing someone.
If we do it, there has to be a clear-cut policy, and, and what I would suggest is, yeah, I think, I, I, you know, I think Selectmen, former Selectmen that die, I think it would be appropriate to lower it to half-staff, but it needs to, it'll be specifically written, when it'll be lowered, how long it'll be lowered, and all that kind of stuff. And the reason I feel that way is, you know, I agree with both of you, I couldn't care less, but I think it's in recognition of, of service to the town and also to the, the country by, by promoting and working in our democracy, which everybody fights to defend, so, I don't think, but I don't think it should go beyond that, that's my personal opinion.
But that's my point, that's my point. When you have, quite frankly, when you have people like Mr. Fernet that served forty-five years and more than that, and Charlie has been on, I mean, these people have given the better part of their lives to the Conservation Commission.
Maybe we should, maybe we should lower the, the town flag for those.
What town flag?
Well, we'll make it, I mean, this, this basically was the town flag we talked about.
Yeah, but there's only, there's only two in existence.
Well, we could have it reproduced, we'd have to reproduce, I mean, so it's a flag.
But, oh.
I mean, I think, I don't think, but I think, see, what I, what I don't think we can do, we can't, we can't not have a very clear policy.
That's what I said, that's what I meant when I said it's fraught with all kinds of.
No, that's what I'm saying, if we have a policy, it would be very specific, it would say for Selectmen it gets lowered at, you know.
Well, I think what Selectman Gulart's saying is, if we say it's only Selectmen, then we're excluding a decorated war veteran, who also has.
No, we're not excluding anybody, we're including, we're not, we're including the, the position of Selectmen, which I think is the top position in the town.
But then Mr. Fernet doesn't get the flag lowered in her, in her example.
You don't have to do like a position, if you explore the policy, you don't have to do a position, it could be blank years of service to the town and have some sort of standard, but it seems like we're not interested.
Oh, well.
Right?
I just.
I'm interested.
I just feel like the second you have a policy, I think this is what you're getting at, the second you write it out in a policy, it's, you're kind of stuck to it, and if you miss someone, then you're, then you have an issue.
That's the whole point, though, you want to be stuck to it.
The policy is for like, it's to name, God forbid, if one of the chiefs happened to, you know, die in the line of duty, would you think the flag should come down? That's the question, and this policy would answer it. Something like that, but, you know, the US Code is obviously good because.
See, I think, I think that's what you want, you, you don't, you don't want it to be arbitrary, it cannot be arbitrary, and I think it has been arbitrary, I think the example you just used is problematic, but I think.
I think, I think that what you read, the night that you read that, I felt that there was enough flexibility in there, it answered questions, you know, what authority does the town have to do such and such? And you read that, and it was very clear what the authority was that was granted under And you read that, and it was very clear what the authority was that was granted under what you read. And.
But the thing is, I don't think it can be arbitrary. So we can't just say, okay, Mr. Fernet, 40 years, so we're going to lower for him, but we're not going to lower for somebody else who did 20 years, you know? Because where do you draw the line, you know? And so I think we need to, because I think the other thing is, we're not always going to be here.
Well, the other thing too is, we've had Selectmen who have served one term, three years. We've had Selectmen that served a few months and left. We've had Selectmen who don't complete three-year terms. We have others that have been here 20 some years. And I think that the sitting board at the time that the event occurs, whoever the individual is that passes, the sitting board of Selectmen has the authority under what you read to us to order the flags lowered. I don't think it has to be done for everybody, I, you know.
I'm not, I'm not comfortable with anything that's arbitrary because I think that's when you, that's really when you can get yourself in trouble.
This is the first time it's come up though, Jack, I can tell you. This is the first time it's been questioned.
I know, I know.
My, my only issue with the state law, which kind of contradicts the actual US flag policy, is, because the US flag policy really outlines what the circumstances are when you can lower the flag. I think your concern, what you're getting at with the state policy, it basically just says the town can decide.
Well, first of all, the state policy is the governor can, can require it, and that's his authority.
But the town retains its authority to decide.
He's delegated some authority down to the towns to make their own policy. And I just don't, I don't like arbitrary things, I don't like, I don't like decisions, you know? I mean, so we didn't like a Select, somebody didn't like a Selectmen, so then I, you know? I think, I think it just should be clear, but we.
I would hope in death we all put that aside. I said, I would hope in death we would all put that aside, any board.
The question, along the same line, we talked about line of duty, God forbid, a line of duty. I'm thinking, you know, when I lived in Somerset, I worked in Somerset for the fire department. Even a retired veteran from the fire department, police that passed, we will, out of respect. It's more of a, it is, I can see where you get a little, you figure it's our territory, one or the other. I mean, you guys are in a position, you folks are in a position, as the town fathers per se, select, select boy. I still feel that you have enough sense to make a decision on that, I mean. It's so hard to put it into writing.
But, but, let me, let me use this as an example.
Trying to figure out where you're coming from, Jack.
Well, what, well, it can't be arbitrary, that's where I'm really coming from. Because I think, you know, because what's the, what's the cutoff? Mr. Fernet, 40 years? What about Mr. Digits? I don't know how long he's been, do we not lower it?
These guys are like 40 plus years.
Yeah, yeah, I know, but so what is the number? Is it 30 years or 20 years? See, I don't think it can just be at the whim of the board that happens to be sitting at the right time. I think the example you used about Selectmen, I mean, I don't know, if somebody only, if somebody only served one term, they ought to get.
There's another thing that we've, we've always done. And that is, when a person in town passes away, there is a police escort. Now, it may just be from, assuming that the funeral is in town, at one of the local facilities, local churches, then the police meet that quartage at the town boundary. And if it's, let's say it's St. Patrick's, they would go down to St. Patrick's, that's been done. That, the police have always done that. There have been other instances when people who are, let me say, more well-known, more prominent, that the fire department has gotten involved, but that's really been left to the chiefs to decide. And I think that's fine, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to change any of that. And, but I think that that, that respectful recognition by the police department to just escort, and not only that, if it's, if the funeral takes place out of town, but they pass through town to get to where they're going to be interred, that also happens, okay? If it's totally out of town, the only one I remember was in the case of our first policewoman, whose funeral was at the church in Berkeley. And there were two Selectmen, I believe, and the chief, and we all went together. And, and then he had the lights on and, you know, it was, that was very nice, showing respect for that person who had passed.
Let's keep it with the flag policy though, because I don't have any trouble with that stuff either. But, but I think we, why don't we take this under advisement and.
Get some more policies or find out what some others do, just.
Right, okay. Sounds good. Okay, do we have any announcements? We have a few. You want to do some?
Sure. Try, I could probably do this without this. Trash bags, sharps, disposal containers, and recycling stickers are all for sale at the Board of Selectmen's office. Please call 508-669-6431 for more information. There are vacancies on the Historical Commission, Land Use Committee, and Capital Outlay Committee. Dog licenses are available. Massachusetts general law requires that all dogs six months of age be licensed. An application for a dog license was included with your census. To that end, please complete and return your census within 10 days, even if no changes are needed. For assistance, call the Town Clerk's Office at 508-669-5411, option three. Second mailings are costly to the town.
The other, the other thing I was just heard today that the Open Space Committee would also like to see another member. So if you're interested in the Open Space Committee, which is a very, very good meet, a good committee, they're very active and they're, they're doing some great stuff right now. Any Selectmen reports?
I got just a little one. I've gotten some emails. It's getting to be that time and people want to know what's going to happen with electrical rates. So, the, all of you who opted into the aggregation program, where right now and for the past couple of years, you've been paying .0949 or nine, just about nine and a half cents per kilowatt hour. The rate will change, it's a three-year contract. The new rate becomes effective January 18th, 2018, and the new rate is .10122, which is a little bit over 10 cents, but it is not a full penny because the difference is actually .00632. So there is a slight increase, it's a three-year contract. For those of you who have service through National Grid, so obviously this doesn't apply to anybody under TMLP or anyone who did not opt into this program. National Grid actually sent out rates, and if you pick a fixed price, it's 12.6. Now, remember the number, .10122. And it goes up from there, and all of the rates listed in the National Grid flyer that came out with the bill are all higher than .10122. So anyhow, January 18th is when the new rate starts, and based on what we have here, you still will be saving based on this new contract.
And that's all, and you should have come with your last bill.
May I ask a question? Are residents who are not involved in the program able to opt in to the program?
My understanding is there will be cards again, excuse me, where if somebody wants to opt out or get in, that they have that option as long as they're not TMLP.
So that's the start of every new contract with the aggregation?
Well, this, yeah, this one's going to go for three years though. But once you're in it, you can still get out by giving notification if you decide you don't want to be in it.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Well, I was hoping you were going to report about the school building study committee.
Well, I can do that. So we have established a school building committee, study committee. And we're looking at, the purpose of the committee is to look at the needs for the middle school and the elementary school here in Dayton. As I think most everybody who's driven around town knows that we have a tremendous amount of building going on, a lot of new residents, a lot of new, new families in town. So the concern that I always, always have is, you know, it's easy for towns, because boards like this turn over, to kind of not worry about things until they become a crisis, and we like to avoid that. So we're going to look at the, you know, the, the population growth and the need for, for new classrooms and that kind of stuff. And our goal is to have something by April 1st. We're going to meet twice a week. Jesse Berman, Beerman, is the chair of that, that committee. And our next, our next meeting will be January 3rd, just before this meeting at 6:30. So if anybody wants to get involved or come and give us any thoughts or whatever, we certainly welcome the public to join in and help us out. Okay.
Good work.
Yep.
Does that study not only look at fixed costs, like room size of the facility, but also average cost per student and the impact to the town?
Yes, we'll look at all that, we'll look at that classroom size, you know? Because there is some standards that they like to stick to, and right now, yours is getting a little bit out of control, so.
But your committee doesn't, you're kind of using the data to drive the conclusion, so you don't really know what the conclusion is yet. So you're kind of, you wouldn't really know about rates or anything like that because you don't know what the recommendation is yet.
No, 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 we're just, those are the kind of things we'll look at, as far as data goes, to, to make our recommendations go in.
They don't talk about cost.
There's nothing to talk about yet because they don't know what.
Because it's not, this is not a budget committee, this is a needs base.
Study committee.
Yeah, we study the cost of our.
No, no.
Study everything.
So once they make a recommendation, then there'd be something to study.
This meet, this, we'll be studying the needs for future. And then when you get into the, when that gets done, gets proposed to the school committee, then the budget issue takes over, and then it's a matter of what you're going to do. What is it?
The roof?
Right, no, this is strictly Dayton Elementary School and Middle School, nothing to do with high school.
Yeah, I understand, just as an example.
Yep, okay. We have an acknowledgement, our newest Eagle Scout is Jack Patoza.
Matoza.
Matoza.
I just wanted to, I saw it on Facebook, so I just wanted to congratulate Jack on becoming Dayton's newest Eagle Scout. And I also wanted to congratulate his mom, Robin, who I know is probably really excited. So congratulations, we're very proud of you.
And his dad, George.
And his dad, yeah.
His project was at the Aggie School, wasn't it?
I don't know what his project.
His, his mother mentioned it to me, and I said, when it's all done, it would be nice if, if he would let us know because we would like to publicly recognize him.
Is it the project on the other side? Is that the one?
Well, maybe what we can do is ask him to come in, maybe to our next meeting.
Yeah, Karen, could you make a note? I think it's at the Aggie School.
I think you're right, I think she's right.
You could have him come in and talk about what he did.
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, minutes to be approved.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October 11th, 2017, the minutes of the regular meeting of November 1st, 2017, and the minutes of the regular meeting of November 8th, 2017.
Second.
Hey, I want to pay to say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do you have any warrants?
Yeah, we signed a whole bunch.
I signed them in there, I know we have them.
Yeah, listed here though.
Thank you. No, it's okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the following warrants be approved. Warrant 26A-18 in the amount of $88,458.52 payroll. Warrant 26B-18 in the amount of $21,945.21. Warrant 26C-18 in the amount of $247,515.3. And warrant 26D-18, the amount of $1,000, the last three being accounts payable, be approved.
Second.
Want to pay to say aye?
Aye.
And that 26 designates, we're already halfway through the year.
Yes.
How about that, huh?
Stick to the script, Mr. Chairman.
Stick to the script. Okay, I will next entertain a motion that we go into executive session under Massachusetts General Law 30A, Section 21A, 62, for discussion of astrosynica property and negotiation with non-union personnel, specifically the police chief.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, want to pay to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call?
Aye.
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 Okay, we're in executive session, we will not be coming back to open session.